Let's make the list of why the United States and where our is sugar dollar, which thing is combination. If there's one, we've never seen together. Four, two, nine, first. Rachel, what was today? Well, I don't get it.
Um, he called, I don't know if we know any specifics, but he called like the way to know he wouldn't be here that he had followed, so if we had she was important enough to make a corner, he wouldn't, he wouldn't come. So we told him he'd be trying not to come. He was already at it. As far as we know, yeah.
So he'll probably call me back and then we would just, it's on Friday.
Okay, uh. Any amendments to the agenda? Do you have one? And if you know, space and we should have a period of debate.
Um, we haven't updated the gentleman's said, maybe he'll.
I'm just making sure that everybody in the audience can do that. Okay, uh, approval of amendments from the previous meeting. I'm gonna go on to the seventh minutes. Besides, all the favors in the conversation, lots. Both motion varies since uh old business. Now report to the subdivision, Junior County Grove.
Oh, that is, um, it's in the clerk's office, should be finalized any minute. No, no one else sent it upstairs, but I'll give you, send you the original area when it's done.
Okay. Uh, any other old business? Okay, on the new business. We have a area. Cars can sell short term rental permit. One, two, three, four, five, six. You don't have a full.
No, we don't have that permission.
But okay, we, we don't have a, a full board. We're short one member. Is that right to go ahead?
What's that?
Yes. We don't have a full board, we're short one member. Are you okay? Proceed with the hearing. Yes.
Yes.
Okay. So, Albert's presentation.
Um, not showing.
Just kind of summarize what it, why it is you're wanting the short term rental. Read, maybe read that first portion of your application where you wrote stuff.
Okay. Please introduce yourself.
Oh, hi, I'm Sandy person. It's linked to our neighbors, um, our short term renters. Um, it's been an experience for us, the next one, never a problem. Um, we've had a lot of them and it's a nice way that a lot of people into the community. Um, we seem to utilize the camp restaurants, the dark sky community. Um, we like to do that too. We certainly like to make some extra income. Um, um, to offset our expenses, um, as we are getting pretty close to retirement.
Okay. Uh. Were there any others?
Yes, so some summaries of the letters that were, um, mailed in or brought in. We have one from Lockhart. Adjoining across the street at the top of the platform, full time resident. They are concerned about outsiders tainting the small community's integrity, tranquility and peace. And they had concerns about security. The Bentley's are across the street within three hundred yards. They are not full time residents. They have no objections. The five heads, not sure how to pronounce that. They are joining neighbors, not full time residents. And they have no objections. Their only suggestion is that there are clear rules about safety, fire danger and emergency access. Would like visitors to be familiar with H O A rules. That's it.
Over to the medical areas. Something.
Yeah.
Not water, nothing.
It's not. It was just something that they wrote.
Did you get the letter from Bill to you? I was in Washington. Your safety card.
Oh, that was from Bill. What, what is Bill's last name?
Tivo.
The E.
T H E R E.
Yeah, I didn't know about the rules, it's always, yeah. Kind of.
Okay, well, hold on.
So my only question was, how do we keep, keep going your
We have a, I trust it's designed long way around.
Yeah, and how are you?
Yeah, within a month, a few weeks.
I have an, I have a problem with that.
Yeah.
Oh, it's like seven homes in the community, everybody knows each other's way, but that's what it did.
See, we don't live up there, we, um, law took this.
Okay, right. Um, and with the people renting behind us. Um, we've had anyone from the radiator. Oh, dang.
Do you have a, it's a big turn over. I mean, is that a
Yeah.
Yeah, I think it's different people all the time, um, but it's, it's just now sometimes there's, there's little ones that sledding down the hill.
Oh, and they're afraid.
You're around, yeah, but you never, never issue. Okay, it's, it's not a place that I think people um, are expecting to have a rapid time. It's a very quiet little neighborhood.
Oh, bring it.
There's not much to do.
God, it's good.
What was your name then?
Lori Seven.
Okay, how do you comment to the instructor?
The comments that I would have, um, the one little compliance issue that we had was taken care of immediately following the last meeting. Uh, and then the property boundary is very impressed. It's all, um, fenced, if I'm in, memory serves me correctly. It's very nice the way they have it set up. It's a small neighborhood.
It is best.
Yes, completely. Yeah.
There's gates, you know, we do our property to find a definite spark access. Um, but yeah, it was completely, it's, it's super obvious and even the driveway, it's the alienated premises.
It's all wrong.
Okay, uh. Any questions from the plan?
Yeah, um, how wide is the flight part of your lot? For, before you drive in? How long is it?
Not a problem at all.
How soon you say it's best?
We had
It's easy to, I would say two cars could pass on that if I remember.
No, no.
No.
That's, that's a hell of a way.
It's a one.
Yeah, and then there's like a it, it drops down to a bag for, um, for drainage other side. Uh, but we had, uh, like we had big furnitures, you're concerned about big trucks. We had, we had like a big furniture delivery, um, and then a guy that was, um, putting blacktop down in the area, he drove in to see if we wanted, he had extra in his load. And he had no problem coming in and then we have circuit, so it's easy to to get around.
Okay, which I'll get to you both from physics events and then move on to the herd. I have turned around a lot.
Yeah. You obviously.
No, I don't know, I actually we're better than that.
Okay, any further questions from the plan committees?
Yeah, I'll, 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 yes, prove better. I don't know, two bedrooms downstairs, right, basically. Yeah, 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 it was downstairs.
Yes.
Well, I mean, there was two bedrooms out there, go upstairs, you have a master. Is there another bedroom inside that? I could prepare at least.
Yeah, it's just.
Yeah, there's an en suite and a walking closet. Yeah.
I'm looking at your, you were said Lisa Morgan. It says, see you catch.
Oh, yeah.
And it's all nothing to have.
Oh, was this, there was this, this car. The hell.
If there were copies that got made.
It was, I didn't make copies of videos.
But, but you have.
Yeah. Do you want her contacted though?
No, I just thought it's gonna say it in here. Uh. Also, what, what would be nice to say in the rule? There, there's nothing, or they have something else that says, really complex. Case of issues.
Yeah, it's in there.
Says, where do you contact those in the rule?
So we have to put at least says, so we know the separate sheet.
Yeah. And then we also put in a letter signed by Lisa, says she will be the agent for one oh seven one silver drive for S T R purchases.
But we can put it in the rule, the rule is the best person.
Mm-hmm.
And says in place, the western minimum, especially for our high, high powers. I mean, is there whatever, you have people putting up midnight, they're still talking, messing around, because the neighbors will hear that, just causing eddles. Throughout our regular.
Yeah, um.
There's no, there's not this, this specific, specific time. Of what time, what, you know, that.
Guess we could put in a time, no, nothing.
No, ten, well, ten, probably, you know, nine, nine o'clock. Is there being said it's a lot?
Yeah, teeth and skipping, so we can, we can make it.
And just what, I was gonna make her know, just because we haven't talked about this in other S and R's. But you're gonna have people coming from out of town in cities, you're gonna need to put something on your toilets that says, no flushing of this, that, and that, and that. Otherwise it's not safe. So that, that we really need to start specifying that to be, for the help, the S and R's.
Yeah, you can get with me. I may have a state, um, flyer that you could hang up there. That's real nice. Just educational flyer that you could put up above the toilets or somewhere.
Sure, yeah.
Let me check for you.
Is there still lots up there?
Yes.
They left a lot of them there. I know you mentioned one, so.
Ah.
That's a ball.
Yeah.
Um, it'd be nice when the fire moves or a lot of that. We bolted that.
Yeah.
So it sticks out, it goes fire, short fire there.
Yeah.
No.
You'll burn out almost all of them. Even because there are lots of public service, so, yeah, so unfortunate, you can't why. Also, uh.
Yeah.
Where is the wish model event? Where is she?
She's, um, like
She's not.
She's within twenty minute drive. Um. So why is it like an hour?
She was local.
Yeah, she, yeah, she's local.
She's completely pulled in her range.
Okay, so, is that north?
It's north. Yeah.
Any questions from the plan?
Also, I'd like to see on your ventilation plan and all that. I, I see the red markings, but is that a fire picture?
Yes.
That's, it's all, it, it's not, the red comes up a lot, you don't know, it's just a red mark. That's a problem. Still, the math is good, I like the, the math, because it's just, it does show them better than just some things. It doesn't make any sense, so your math is really good, it's just I can't see that that's a fire signature, this will come to that.
They're, they're super visible when you're on site. I have an extra contact card. Or Lisa, if anyone wants it.
No, we're, we're in stoves, but.
They are.
Central source of heat. Now we have this.
Yeah.
And then according to she required. What was the mail is?
Do you have instructions for about her?
I'm sorry.
Fire instructions.
Instructions, yes. Okay, yes.
Okay.
There's also humans out there, I mean, I put on site too, that are literally pointing spray. Um, that are, that will help out.
There are no further questions, all code of the hearing. Go into fine information discussion.
Why are we thoughts are of the spots, although they're small. That, that's a bigger concern to me. About anything in, you know, see the hills, one, two, three, or four, I think, uh. There were pre-zoned lots of that, um. They're just training.
What's considered time?
I'd respond to Bill, you agree, but I think that those we talk about these, that, if, now, those are any concerns, we need to change our regulations.
What we thought.
And not allow S T Rs on lots underneath certain ground.
Well, we talked about that on the last revision, that dropped out, but don't imply. We decided to run case by case basis. So the only way I could in my, this is me talking. Could vote for approval on this is, uh. It has to be renewed in a year, correct?
They renew them in a year and we review any complaints that may.
And if there are complaints about from next door neighbors. Why then it's gonna be a real problem to do this.
Okay, it's working. Am I correct in saying that there is another S T R?
There is.
About an ingredient, how much, lot of extra work, make sure it's your cage for the best.
Which way? Uh.
Yeah.
It's, it's right on the group of, of the border of French. All the way within fifteen years of this.
What one is last thing, you know? When I see idiots. His Tom is two. I can't pronounce everything.
Block, block out.
Yeah.
In the back, someone's there. Is the one? And so it's a small, small foot.
Enter.
Or not, like, I don't, you know, they're less than I don't, I, I do, I don't, I don't have really a period. Of course.
Okay, right, right, the question is, there's a test.
I have a question, you know. Is into your renewal process? If there were any complaints, even if they were fixed during the year. Is that something that you bring to us to address or you just, um, we never hear enough?
If it were something that were of significance, if I was able to validate that complaint and, but it was of significance, yes, I will bring that to you.
That's all I'm here.
Yeah. And then it would go to the county commissioners to revoke the S T R.
Goes with the same.
Which we have done once.
I was more concerned about during the renewal process. If then we would rehear it at that point. It's not the way we work it.
Well, um, they're all they're all due at the beginning of the year in January, so we start looking at that in November, December timeframe. Uh, we're small enough, we know when there's something. Usually if it's of significance, I would bring it to you before the renewal process, if I felt like it was something that would keep them from being renewed.
So let's there's not an overstand.
No.
Yeah, very much.
I think the requirement is well, actually from the plan commission. Well, her notion of the key news. Not for me. I was gonna remove, have y'all been reading this out and checking form under this form?
Yeah.
Um.
Yeah.
The evidence.
What are the options?
That we accept is that's presented with the following exceptions. I'd like to see rules include fire, there, and contact numbers on that sheet.
Did you say about the vendor?
They're accepted with, with, they add fire, sure, manic contact on the sheet.
So we got Westwood Fire Department. Is that?
Well, somebody, they need, that thing moves quickly, say over the bar, but also, so.
We haven't listed.
Okay, so it's got this, um, what would it say?
Like on your rule.
We got that.
Uh. Okay.
If you have it, we know, we know.
Do you want me to read what we have on the safety information?
That'd be great. So there's fire extinguishers in the kitchen, side refrigerator, lower area to the right of the stove. Emergency exit routes, baby floor, front door on the east side, sliding glass door, north side. Downstairs, one room door, east side. Emergency contact police, western county sheriff, west lip fire, and I have all the numbers, west lip fire department. Hospital, western county, et cetera.
We're saying add, we can add these.
I'm, I'm sorry, we can add these, yeah.
That's what I heard.
Okay.
They're not, we said we're called.
Um, did you give me the example?
I think so.
I'm glad to be able to.
Yeah. Well, that's good, do, do you want to go completely just permission? There.
You want to finish, girl? We lose a kid, but man, there is.
Oh, that's fine.
They've got it, now we got it. It, it takes away from what I if they're at it. So I guess we should add it, that needs to be, something.
You say, no, needs to be on the rules.
Needs to be on rules. Your dad took a role, they go. Mobile pain, if somebody's in an emergency, you don't want, want a page, so then we have to fix.
Well, yeah.
It's just one, you won't want to sit the page here.
It's just one.
That's that, like I said, is make sure the rules with the telephone numbers. Emergency contact and all. So, I make a vote to accept this S T R, with the one exception, the phone number, emergency call.
You make a motion to recommend the different messages.
Make a vote. Is that what we said in the end, this is, I thought we changed that, no, we're all saying. Okay, I'll make a motion. Recommendation of yes to the commissioner for the citizens. If one exception of the emergency down to be included in.
There, go here a second. There, go here a second. Any further discussion? Not for proceedings, uh, justice. By. Real. I have strong reservations. Carol.
I am.
Mary.
I'm.
Carol.
Dave.
I won't, I, but I'm like real, I have strong reservations, uh, you think so many S T Rs again. In one area. It all raises people quite spot on.
Yes, that is correct. And we need to press that in rule of our life.
You know. You can take care of it. Okay, reasons. Carol.
I appreciate the fact that their lot is fenced, which I think is important in such a small area. But I I agree with you, I know that, that I'm wanting their lot to be small.
Definitely. Uh, I wouldn't, I, because it was, it was, in good balance, um. Most is very well laid out. I do not think of the time about. Spot zoning being an issue. That does play. A big part of things, but I still think it should be good advantage, your. Mary.
I voted I because. There's already a precedent, I believe, in that area, and I know that these will do a good job, of course, mentioned.
Carol.
I voted I because they're willing to ask the things that we, we requested, but I am determined, Ron, about spot, anything about that. Now, if we get three more accusations, that we could prove, now we're not gonna think about it.
Two.
I will die, the reservations are the smallest size of the lot. It's big, it's light lot also, but it does help that you're all fence. That is, I mean, yeah. That's great. And that you, you know, keep your people inside the fence. Uh. And if we. Have war in the area, we can just send a go, and if there's too many. We're comfortable, sir. Sorry.
There's, there's a lot of privacy too. Um, whoever sort of said where the building lots were, I know you, we came over. Very long private drive. And then, you know, we have complete privacy on both of our decks. With trees or that sort of thing when you're out. So. Potentially, I guess, the lot maybe seems small, but it's, they're really set apart. With privacy in mind.
Well, people just look right there for us.
Yeah, there's no building.
There's no building.
Well, there's no building.
It's not too much. And I don't think he ever went, but that's, that's his, yeah.
Yeah, there's, um, there can be more. People would come to the city, well. They'll start wondering, that's what I worry about, those law, law, or disturb, if they have that, that.
Um, five or six, no trespassing, every. Every area that you might wonder, person's gone. But.
Someone's, you mean, free pass. Yeah, that's all I'm gonna keep, boss people out.
Okay.
It's, there's not gonna.
All the everybody. All of you, basically.
Now, they'll be on. And, uh.
Uh, well, people like much. I voted I. I mean, it's a good presentation, a good plan. Uh. I do have reservations, but just go for lot size. And it's. It's close to another S T R. Okay, don't need, don't need passes, yes. You're really, I think you're voting right.
Sorry.
Will recommend that commissioners do a good job.
And then do you hear from them?
I'll let you know, um, on that, when that commissioner's meeting is. I don't know that I'll be able to get it on this coming Wednesday. Um, and then the next Wednesday is staff reports. So it may be later in the. But I'll let you know as soon as I get it on, I hope.
And, and you.
And you can zoom in, or you can attend the meeting, they prefer you attend, but. Usually. You could zoom in, if you're coming from out of town, that shouldn't be an issue.
Correct.
I'll present, you won't have to present.
That's great. Do you need to spread the news?
Okay.
Do you need to send or anything else to kill it?
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Cheers.
I'm sure you're up here.
Okay. Our next agenda either. Is. Area for health turnaround. Walk through all the, well, we need to have. I asked you the same question I asked Booth, so, uh, did, will one member short?
Yes, that's fine.
Okay. Uh. Ready for that, good presentations.
Okay. Uh, we are really less own property that we do, which is on over thirty-six acres out by Bear Peak. Uh, we love that, about this property, that it's a good place for locals. To bring your small family birds together, to attend a wedding, or get together for, you know, small, uh, and they gather. It's a four bedroom house, the maximum is eight people. And, uh, the house is really well kept, and in a beautiful, various included spots. Uh, we're not reaching for large gatherings, we have people, all of our peoples, um, states, no fires, um, no bad boys. Uh, and our neighbors have been very supportive, and we're even able to offer a couple of our neighbors some. Um, employment opportunities through, uh, we haven't done this yet, but I've offered it to one of our neighbors who's interested in doing some training with us, so she will be practically on site. And then another neighbor have done heavily small, um, handyman jobs for us, so it's really economically moving and a very quiet, secluded spot. Um, I mentioned last month that, and we have a couple who are there for the long term, since I have social needs permit. To be long term rental, they're there for over thirty days, um, to mourn the passing of his place mother. And so just the few that are up there taking silent time away, and, oh, my closest neighbor said they've just seen them driving down the road, so you can come back, so that's our ideal tenant. Uh, that's the vision that we have, whether being able to do it. Short term rental, and like that, that our oldest daughter is heading to college, I'm very proud of her, but. We're administering family, and the income from short term rental, uh, will be enormously helpful. To where me, I will send my daughter and my, my later children, my flat kids, uh, to college, so that's really, we're invested for the long term, and for the good of the community. I'm also very much, I'm sorry, I'm using these moves, L I D, the origin agent, she started with that, my husband Brandon is here with me. And I do want to add, I'm very grateful for all of our help and hints that everyone has, and tricks that we've gotten from all of you. Um, your insights on what makes a properly run well, I'm grateful for those tips, and so I'm very much, um, learning to. Adjust things so that it works for everybody, and so that the, the house functions, and that, and that very thing.
Okay, thank you.
So you know where Bear Peak is, Bear Base?
Bear Base, yes.
You know Bear Peak, it's the mountains there? Is what Bear Base is named after, there's a little saddle. The, uh, north side, our house is in the saddle. On top of the ridge, surrounded by thirty-six acres plus.
Okay.
And there's a small strip of land between us and public land, which is the seven hundred acres that covers Bear Peak, and I've even had my neighbor, like, who owns that little strip. Offered, had me buy that from her. Uh, which helps her, which I think is really good, I have made clear to her that. To buy that, that's can do with short term, so we have that, that was for long term, but we have not had interest. So for us, it looks that short term rental, especially because we're only an hour away, so I know we are in San Juan. But we're, we're really close as far as being able to access the property, if anyone have any needs aside from our agent. So, um. It's a, it's a perfect setup for us, basically for me as a, a housewife, to have an extra job and be able to support us with my home.
Okay, we're ready, Ron, in the.
Um, there was one from. B R O G H A M. They're adjoining neighbor, uh, full-time resident. They are not opposed, they were just concerned about trespassers. And damage to existing trees and vegetation.
Damage from factors?
Trees and existing vegetation. But they're not opposed.
Charlie, open. Public comment? We'll be here soon. Uh, any conversion? Questions?
Oh, this is proper fenced.
So our neighbor, B R O, has a, uh, not a very good fence on their side toward Bear Peak. Other than that, there are not a lot of low profile fences, there is one between us and, um, our neighbor to the. Uh, east, uh, he has really good fences. Uh, our neighbors to the north, um, have just been building families, and so they have not outlined their property. Uh, with fences, but I do feel that with it being thirty-six acres and with it being the. Point of, you know, the purpose of the place being to be, to really get away and to be, um. You know, not, not trying to connect with other people, I feel like. Um, hopefully, the fencing for not actually pop, you know, pose practical problems within the neighborhood.
Is there a house on Anderson's property?
Uh, is Anderson Mike and Ann, I know them by first name. Which, uh. Anderson, I know Mike and Ann on one side, Mike and Tracy on the other side, and one of them is right towards.
He on the northwest, northwest corner.
It looks like there's. The northwest corner, if that is Mike and Ann, maybe you have a house built down, they built a road that goes to the top of their land. And they couldn't bring their cement trucks up, so they, they didn't do that property. So instead, where they're down the drive, they have sort of a little tower house that they've built.
So, we're serving the.
It's rated for eight people.
It's a four bedroom septic, yes.
Four bedrooms.
It's a four bedroom septic, and the house is. Do you rent, so you don't put any short term rentals down, do you advertise? No, ma'am, I'm, you know, not at all, I'm on Airbnb, but only as, uh, thirty or more days. And is the other fence supporting? Yes, it is, I changed that from what was on, right, or. That had not been changed on the site, but I had already made the changes in the house, so after I received that packet that I mentioned you're holding. I went and changed it, and I told, um, Talina that those changes have been made, so she has an email with that information. So you took away the. Absolutely, I'm making an office, because people like to have a work away space. Okay, so the packet that we have, you just took like my, these pictures?
It's from the site, too, information from the site.
Right, it looks like there's twelve beds, and it's twelve. Right, and that has been updated since then. House. Well, I took out a bunch of, I took out the whole set of beds that's there, and, uh, I downsized it so that it's a sleep state. Well, this is, these are the four bedrooms, so you're gonna build out four bedrooms, right? You're gonna. I, I'm, yeah, I'm only gonna make it sleep eight. Yeah, I guess I need to know specifically what's happening to.
I provided that, that was what. Clean was advertised, there's five bedrooms shown in, there's actually five, they're septic, and is a four bedroom septic. That's why I added that.
If, if you were to look again at the, or any site, you would see that the fifth bedroom has been taken away. And I have updated photos, and the reason is that I have that couple of, it's been a morning for the last month. So I've not been able to get up there to do away with, example, the phone pile, the bits out there, the extra building materials. I haven't been able to do those things because I'm expecting, I want a complete privacy.
The true.
In the next couple of days, though, I'll be able to remove the, um, stuff that, um. Doorly noticed earlier from the shed, and then also, um, to, uh, remove some of, some actual furniture that's up there. Um, this, but at that point, I can send photos of showing exactly how the benches they have, or right now, to be able to update those photos because of. How much the protectors. Well, I'm gonna say that I have concerns because of this, that, that she's saying. And so, to me, it seems like it means what she's presenting seems to be what's already not what I'm going to do. So. I, I've got concerns that we are too early in the universe.
The other picture that I've provided you. I wish you'd get my site tour comments. The other, if I'm okay to say, the other pictures that I provided you guys was the picture of the driveway, it doesn't do it justice. This is the particular driveway where. I, a year ago, had come up there to serve a compliance issue with, what we do in short term rentals. Um, and the car, it's such a steep hill. And windy that my car stalled out at there. Delano's with me, so. If. I'm concerned about the winter months, let me just put it that way.
Super dangerous, so we was a short term rental, not for me?
A year, over a year ago, yes.
So you were offered a short term rental, not for me? It was owned by a different LLC at that point, but it was my mistake, I had overlooked the rules, and from the way I misunderstood them, I thought that I was okay to go.
Because I was going down, I was.
Uh, I'm, I'm, he was in Nebraska. Oh, yeah, but if you see any difference in type of script.
That was, that was from your.
Oh, yeah, I shut it down that day, if I found my.
That as well. Um, my other concern from. From this we brought up last time, and it has not changed, just the property manager that we do. So. That particular person is a neighbor, I don't want to get into details and point a finger at him, he is making efforts to. Bring himself into compliance, but is not yet into compli- in compliance.
Does he need any different remedies? That was true.
Not done or where, no.
Can I speak to, to make qualifications, or are you guys still having a discussion, I don't want to interrupt? Let me, let me, hold on, let me, sort of, what, what is he there?
Um, this individual's been notified twice that they cannot live on the property without a septic. He has made efforts to. He's pulled him in. Um, to do the septic. There's also, um. Structures on that property that are not permitted.
So he's living in a trailer?
Yeah. In an R V, and. Sure, maybe not, have.
Okay. Got one comment that I'm not sure. That. Is relevant, is relevant. To who being the manager of the S T R.
Maybe not, I think it's a good overall compliance issue question, that's what I'm asking. So we have other issues going on here?
Well, just with, well, two separate problems.
He's our separate friend.
He's a, he's a neighbor, but it was drawn to my attention last time that that individual could not be considered a.
Oh, a resident.
A, a resident.
Oh, I see, okay, so give trailers, no, their property, trailers. Oh, they need to.
So. Is he gonna be. One new relative, is he gonna be there?
He has been an amazing neighbor. I have a property for, um. Oh, gosh, twenty-six, uh, yeah, I've been on it for over two years, two and a half, three years, maybe, I can't remember the exact date. He has been a wonderful neighbor, he has done some grading for me since you went up in your car that first time, I also have no complaints about anybody on the driveway, we always warn them that they need full drag just in case. But he has done some grading for us, he has, um, fixed some, a little bit of drywall patching for us. And he has been just incredibly helpful, and he's very, um, he's very mechanically minded, which is why he's. Um, a client for, for the septic, and is going to do some sort of test, I guess, that has to do with how he digs the. Does, does that, I, I don't know about that side of things, but he has been an extraordinarily supportive neighbor, and his wife Tracy as well, has been very, very helpful, they keep a close eye. He'll call me or text me if he sees anything go up that driveway. Um, and he'll just say, you expect them to go today, and to me, I feel like I was a very valid. Person to have nearby, and I believe that he will accomplish what he needs to, being compliant, um, so I have all based in my.
See a license? Special contract.
Just became, uh, homo installation.
To the home.
Oh, you got one, you know, you're right.
My concerns are that you gotta manage a plan, I had a cat manager, it's all. That's an issue, there's no there. How about managing you, with a cat manager?
How about managing you with a kid manager in your house? That doesn't. And lives in an RV over four months, which, which we know. That doesn't matter.
It's been over a year.
So my question is about a manager, you're gonna ask a question? Okay, my question is that the manager is certainly there to respond to emergency, to be available. Um, to be a responsible party in case I couldn't be for some reason. But, the manager, as far as I understand, is not taking the lead on the care of the property. And for these last two years, mine and the man have taken great care of the property and been very close by. We're within an hour, which is actually closer than some places within Tusker County. Um, so it's, it really is, to my mind, uh, I'm not handing over. Total management and ownership of this property to my, he is a real, really great emergency contractor. Unless the rules state something different, but I've, I've asked actually for written needs without managers, and I haven't seen. Those written rules, so I'm, I'm trying to do best I can to fulfill the requirements as far as I understand them.
Further questions from the fire commission? How long's it been since your last STR?
Uh, over a year, yeah, whenever.
Twelve months, for sure.
It's been over a year.
Over a year, yeah.
Um, with the driveway being as, it is, is there cell service at every point in that driveway?
There absolutely is great cell service, um, yeah, I mean, we actually also have Starlink Internet. Which gives people the nerve to link to satellite.
But no, I, I have a Starlink as well, it's not gonna reach the bottom of your driveway.
No, no, no.
The things have changed because, at the top, we were able to. Call, if we remember correctly.
The, the body did not have a. It's a valley, so it's spotty at the bottom, but Mike goes down there and has it all, so it is doable.
Yeah, I'm just thinking, I'm, I'm, I've rented your STR. And I'm stuck at the bottom of this hill, actually, I'm stuck right about where those trees are. Can I tell somebody for help?
Well, that's what Mike's good for, he's way down the hill. I, I understand that there are situations where there are emergencies, but I understand because there are emergencies coming up.
Bill?
Are you gonna rent? All weather, all year round?
That's a really great question, and like you said, it has to do with the continued maintenance that we're doing on our drive. It is certainly possible, we brought around this part of it, you know, it's never given us any trouble until the snow comes. And then Colorado snow and chains there, so you know what that's like, okay, so until we have um, the easy ability to plow. Which is something Mike can do for us, uh, we will most likely be closing it down, depending on weather, from mid-November until, um. We're, we're sort of gauging this as time goes on, but probably uh, early March. Um, we tried moving it through the winter, we had a renter who was out there monthly this winter, and um, she was comfortable. And she was happy to do her work, you know, have a good internet feed in the house. But um, you know, she, she enjoyed having me excited, putting her, you know, having her chains on and going downhill, but I don't think that's. Really sustainable until the room is in better condition, which is something we continue to work on.
Uh, so, do you have somebody that? Has the, the, oh, little plot for you?
Well, once I'm able to be making money on the SDRs, using it for things like that, then I'll set up. Consistent um, ability to do that sort of thing, for now, I call on Mike in a pinch. And he can plow for me in the house several times, but if not. Yeah, he actually just got moved on. But he's not being under any kind of contract or regular work of any kind right now, it's just a matter of peace, be a nice.
Further questions from the fire commission? You have a machine, show it to your own fire room, you know, uh, what's going on?
Yeah, he's been reminding me, I actually, um, once an Airbnb customer, which right now, that's the only way that I would do. Short-term rentals with all new face, after they receive their confirmation, they get a whole packet of information about. Specific locations, I'm sure everybody knows, or maybe guests don't know exactly the location until it's confirmed. Uh, and then that lists Mike's number, the emergency number, the follow-up stuff for the guests. But um, that is something that's, the guests receive is activated with their confirmation.
Why would you put a little bit of those?
Oh yeah, I haven't, I don't have it on fridge. Oh, I mean, I have to, I don't mind.
Has number four been changed permanently, no large events, no extra guests, and then it's inked out?
Oh yeah, that's been changed to that, no, there are no extras, not, oh, the ink out part says, like, except for. Right, and sure instead, I just said no. We really do love the silence out there, and it's not close to anything, which is why we really like the quiet, I mean, I'm not busy cleaning up. How you guys feel about cleaning house, okay?
I'm the, the fire commission recommended approval, recommendation of the mission that this STR is moving.
Not making more things? Wow, I'd like to make more. Yeah, I would, I would like, I would like to, I would like to say, the strictly limited to eight people. Uh, the picture of all the heads in there?
Yes.
Sure, I'll accept your petition.
And I would like to bench it up. That this trash, we picked up this building trash, so you run here.
Okay.
It's on the land, that's an isolated post, a random place, everyone knows. But that, that's removed building material that presently in piles, and then the driveway needs to be excavated correctly by contract. The driveway needs better. And then I consider their element?
Yeah, I'm much different from you.
Well, i- if I was to make them say, oh, no, I'm gonna.
I do give strong warnings about the driveway to any guests, and I've never had a few warnings.
And updated and approved rules of work of ours, of ours, that's my third option. So the, remove the building materials first. Driveway needs to be more correctly done, easier to view, because you said you have trouble, like, going up there.
That's very steep and you could easily, in the winter, slide off.
Oh, okay.
And where was that, like, the house?
It goes, you go straight up and around to the house.
And updated and approved rules of the city.
Anything else?
Yeah. Um. She mentioned that she hasn't been able to get in there to remove the fifth bedroom yet, so that needs to be done, pass something. Can I ask, just regarding your um, proof of eight people? Could it be stated that um, before it goes to commissioners? We need to have pictures of all five of those rooms, showing the one that's on us, and that there's only beds for eight. To go, eight or those commissioners? Just right now, we don't have what she's saying. So I agree with what you're saying, but I'm, I'm trying to figure out how do we make sure?
May I add again, though, that what you're holding is not what's currently on your.
I don't know much.
You're seeing five bedrooms, that's not.
No, I'm looking at four bedrooms, twelve beds.
I have five, I'll just say.
Yeah, it's kind of, yeah, it's got to be.
Uh, one, two, three.
And then two beds. Well, I've got, no, I've got two, I've got bedroom one, definitely bed.
Right, that's one bed.
Okay, bedroom two, two single beds, but that's not, the picture, picture was like one bed. And then bedroom three, instead of two single beds, those are three long beds. Four was like long, so.
Well, that's my, I don't have this, I don't notice that you.
I just think that before it goes to commissioners, let's have pictures of those five rooms, showing previously stayed.
Really, yeah. Well, you got one, and you got four, five, two, four, one, three, that'd be one, two, three, four, five, just the two bedrooms. Then you got six, seven, eight, nine. And then you got this third and four, and then there's that's ten. Eleven, twelve, now she moved four beds.
Yeah, and we have, yeah, sure, this needs to follow.
Right.
So.
I'm having to change any of that, I'm cheating.
So, maybe. Choose your combinations for every.
Proof of, combinations for things, whoever said. So let's see who serves.
Okay.
Somebody read me that question, I can do that in two minutes.
Okay, would you read back the motion please?
unveil, the filing amendment, and this motion to you to recommend approval to the commissioners. Strictly limiting to eight people. We traveled, picked up, driveway is correctly excavated by the contractor. The rules are updated, you have contact information. The, um, it shows only. Places for eight people to sleep.
Okay.
And we're so following you, but.
I will remove mine, and if you'll read the last one.
That makes sense. Well, which is what, the, the same thing. That is the, same, I think, of being, or, or whatever. The, link is correct, it says eight people and shows eight things to sleep. So I'm keeping up.
Uh, and only four beds, that's right, I think that's five, so it needs to be more bedrooms.
Okay, then that, or that might be here.
Four bedrooms, eight, eight in a row. But I want that for more than those commissioners for.
So proof of all of the bed would be four. Being presented to the commissioner. One or answer question with the.
I am very happy to reply, of course, with supplying photos of the debris picked up. And the bedrooms brought to complete compliance, um. Is it usual that extra steps can be taken between this meeting and the commissioners?
With proof that it happened, absolutely.
Okay, my question is, are we saying that I need to get a, so you won't send this on to the commissioners? Until I set up a contract with a road person to fix the driveway? Or can I just show critically?
No, the one thing we have for proof before we went to commissioners. Wasn't four bedrooms and maybe beds.
And the trash.
Right. Move the trash.
Yeah, the trash.
That wasn't my understanding, you have a, get, uh, past your.
Well, if she's got hot, we could actually, right, come over.
You said licensed contractor.
I said a lot of contractors, but if somebody can, if somebody can go down and somebody see that it's road there.
Do you want me to take off? License contractor?
Yeah, I'm just a little, uh, we must.
So correctly excavated, so that you can tell it's an accident? Okay, so how are we gonna know that that happened?
Should we start your side tour?
I mean, I think you guys driving out, it would be good memory, I don't think we'll go drive out then.
Okay, so. You gotta watch your.
So, some of that has to do with pending on my ability to pay for these things, which I'm happy to do. But the rentals need to start before I have the money. So part of that is just an issue, I'm, more than how I would love to get a whole paid road, and that's great. But the money has to start before I can do that, and I.
I ask people to pay a road, you can take a truck and go down that road and make that.
Okay, sure.
It doesn't have to be.
Yeah, I understood, I saw. I would be interested to see what you guys' opinion of it was if you drove it, because it's a pretty basic Colorado road, but. I'm, I'm happy to have my ticket to drift down the track, or down with the truck.
Well, Chris, if you live in there, you're fine, but you gotta be aware of it, you're, you're creating a business.
Yeah.
Business costs money to start.
Absolutely, and I, a hundred thousand dollars.
I'm a little scared, if you know, you're wanting to rent, short-term rental last year.
Yeah.
It's not as small, she was calling us, being scary, so, so that's why we're requesting this now.
Thank you.
Right, back to the motion. You feel it created, you know, no?
I'll give it, I'll second.
Okay.
Okay.
It's the movement seconded to recommend the. There's a, a separate, uh, application.
Think six or seven, depending on how it looks.
Correct.
And does it say four bedrooms?
Uh, one of them says four bedrooms, one of them is eight people. Actually, four bedrooms and then, um. Showing eight people places to sleep, I don't know how that works yet. So it's kind of, it's not just eight people, it's showing eight people to sleep, do you want eight people limited as well?
No, because um, they can have a wedding reversal, I mean, I'm fifty people.
You would need a special, you know, especially bedrooms.
Yes, I understand.
So do you need that, cause I, I right now, I'm hostile. All right, I'm putting that in, maximum of eight people.
What? Sleeping?
No, in general. What is, that's what it said.
That's what you said, okay.
The rest.
Presenting your beds.
No, it's a, it's a sleeping position, so it don't.
That's true, I'm, I'm putting that in there too, they've got two, you've got eight people max, and eight people places to sleep, and, and four bedrooms. You got it.
Sorry, I need your question now, you don't ever sleep in a king bed by yourself?
Um, it's a place for two people to sleep.
Okay, so, but can I say eight people max, um, eight beds? Because I'm not gonna assume that in these.
With four beds?
Sure. That, that, you know, I agree, that's a great question.
Let me tell you, that's an issue.
Okay, I should.
It, it's.
I'll think about, I'll do whatever you want.
I know they're renting them for more than their capacity of their septic. There's multiple beds in even some of our current customers. And I can't control that.
Sleeping places, eight sleeping places, I would agree with that. Eight sleeping places and four bedrooms.
Yeah, and if you can, if you think about it like she's thinking about it, eight sleeping places could be eight beds. I, you can't, I can't say. I don't, I could put five kids in that bed, no, I, maybe that's not a good thing to put in there. Because it, is there some rule on the world that says, how many people can sleep in a bed?
We have heard the Olympics.
Well, it's all, it's all defined by, by the set system. Pleasant all the rebel, well, lots of emphasis for that.
Just tell me what you want, because it's gonna be in minutes.
The assumption is that in double, in the, inside six, inside six. I think you've got the off, please try to, try to read over the thing about. I think those beds each sleep two, single beds, one, you can have places for eight.
I'm just gonna make that whether in places for eight weeks, no more than eight people left.
Okay, it's been moved to the second. Is there any further discussion?
Let's repeat what we have, so I would.
Listen.
Please.
Strictly limited to eight people. And four beds. With no more than eight people places to sleep, when we're writing this side of word measure. The trap is picked up, the driveway is correctly excavated, with employees.
Well, physically.
Physically, I like.
Still physically, yeah.
Yeah. That's, that's a great word. And remove the, the bedrooms. And proof of all of the above, before it's submitted to the, is like you said. Go, I can, I can get that to you by tomorrow, you know, I think.
What?
Updated.
I'm, I'm sorry, sorry.
Oh, I'm sorry, there is now, I missed it, updated rules with contact information. So that's the answer. Thank you.
Here, I said earlier to the other S T R. About putting something or your toilet, you've got eight people. And kids, they're gonna do everything they want to, they're gonna stop the perspective, then you gotta mess, then we gotta challenge.
Yeah, these are these have been made by so great for all these little tips people.
Then you're gonna form it out, it's time you go like, yes, you know.
Sure.
You got it. So we can have it all.
Yeah, I'm sure. Thank you.
Okay. It's moving safe. Uh she read the. She read them over again then. Uh we'll read both. If we are. Uh. Carol.
The batteries. Come back. Where is?
Real.
I'm curious about their role. But they've got fifty gallon oil, should have a lot of them by there.
Why don't you say the irrigation? If that's what you're learning.
No.
Oh, yeah. Oh, yeah. Great pressure.
All right.
And the reason is, it's a nice big lot. We had no objection from the neighbors. That's okay.
Justin. I provided all the. Um. This tradition of that. It's it it's a good lot, it's a nice place, forever eternal, but. People who want to think of this.
Correct.
My heart says no, because it's so many issues. I understand that we've got a list of things that we need to. Have a dialogue with it, but. There's just a lot of stuff, there's a lot of stuff, which I see it's a. It looks like one thing, but it's not that, it's to do something else and to go on differently. I'm sorry, I'm in.
Mary.
Hi.
Uh. I will vote I. Um. You know.
Yeah. That was. Uh the conditions. At the. I'm very skeptical. I mean, very skeptical. I appreciate that you come. To us now. To go through the problem means of making this an S T R, very skeptical because. How long, you know, while you ran that out years ago. There were probably a lot more people than that.
Not well, I mean, you don't have to believe me, but not everyone.
It's hard when it's scary to catch people. Although I have conditions. Conditions in that.
Okay, so the motion carries. In three, four, five, is it? Uh we elaborate these reasons. The opinions reasons. Carol.
It's just too much, there's too many things that will be changed, will be fixed, will be fixed, will be done. And it has operated illegally in the past. That's a lot to put on us, accounting to try to monitor. I I just definitely.
Mary.
I voted I. Because there's not enough. To vote no, for me.
I go on the tie, um. There's a, you know. We have a lot of conditions that look like dog. You have any no conditions so fit. Is going to be a monitoring problem. Um. Are you not concerned about the vote, I figured. People wanted to rent it, they wanted to get up that road. It's their things, not mine.
County roads are worse than that some. Not everybody, not everybody's rent capital.
Well, yeah, if they're renting, then that's a road, you might not rent very long. Uh.
I just don't want to see a family get stranded. Cause that doesn't help, yeah, I got stranded in Western. Yeah, that helps the other.
You know where that's really bad going up there, you might want a little sign that says. This is what you do, you stuck here. It's crazy, no one. Go to the night, come over there, I find the top of my. Absolutely, I always want that they need four wheel drive, even if you have to break it where you don't need four wheel drive, I still call them. Especially because I love that R B B has the safety that if someone doesn't like your property, they tell all the community and nobody will rent.
It's true.
And I mean, you can get banned with two bad reviews, and that's great, that's a safety net, so it's actually good. For you guys that I'm using R B B and not being private or something, there's a huge safety there.
Okay, so we're. I guess it's that you don't be.
I'm me.
I mean, it you it's it's up to you to.
I and I'll leave that after the site tour.
Okay.
After next time.
Right.
But you are asking for a letter.
You can be part of it if you would like.
Go last night.
May I ask you a question about the site tour? Okay, my husband said no.
You want us not to disturb the people who are there.
They're leaving, I was, well. I was wondering if I could be notified that it's going to happen, I wasn't notified last time, so I would know that um. I I believe so, I did when I looked into photos and I wasn't notified, I'm looking at my texts or anything, which I guess is how it works. But I'd like to know.
Well, the site was got a golden sign house, take pictures and make sure. Yeah, shall we notify officially?
Perfect, that's great.
And we've started putting the calendar in each one of the applications so that it has the site tour date and the um. Planning commission meeting.
Very handy, thank you.
Okay, thanks for the morning agenda, thank you.
Thank you, man, your list of those things? Emails to me or? Those are being ready fix.
I can send them to you.
Would you? Thank you, I'll let you use her, or you can add that or what do you want to do?
Um when um I'll get them to you, yeah, if you if you want to.
I'll probably get them soon. Thank you so very much.
Oh, I need going staffing and plats at once.
Um and just to kind of run through some things, we are this month running right about what work we're last November. Are permitting. Um the dwellings were up one, non dwellings were down one, so right neck and neck. We do have less septic permits that we've issued. And I'm kind of using that as a way to see project if we're slowing down, if building is starting to slow down. Early in the year, I seen that, but it's starting to pick back up, so. I I guess I'll just keep. Everybody prised as to. What we're seeing from our end based on permits being pulled, kind of hard to predict, I tried going through historical data and everything to. Show trends, but there's really nothing. I can't find any trends other than God weather, nice weather, it picked up in the summer, so.
Heard last year working.
Uh last year we were at eighty seven pull, and this year we're at sixty fours. That's telling me the growth in the future is going to start slowing down, I can't guarantee that, but it's just. Just that you can't guess.
There's a building going on right around me, I'm just curious. Is the septic permits, have you seen any trend on the number of bedrooms, are they smaller or bigger?
They seem to be going bigger. And I'm and I'll be real honest with you, if I see. A contractor, Delena Caesar, that's pulled a two bedroom septic. Why not add, at least offer that to the. Person you're building for. To go with three bedrooms to the same size tank. It's either a larger field or a large few more chambers, I mean, it really is not that much cost wise. For them not to go that way if they ever want to add on, that way I'm not sitting there with two bedroom cabin. And I want to add on, and now I got to add infiltrators down the road, ten years down the. So we've been kind of trying to educate them.
Yeah, I just wonder how many four beders.
We're seeing.
I thought maybe mine.
We're seeing a lot of fortified bedrooms. Yeah.
Well, the only trend may also be related to interest rates. You know, mortgage rates just go by, now they're saying.
Yeah, but you have some constraints as a tether.
That if they do that. You know, that means for most more people to.
Well, the bigger how. I remember class. It's virtually. More of a class that's.
A lot of the people that come in are paying cash.
From that last point.
Mm hmm. Yeah.
I mean, she like. You know.
Income wise, um we're down, obviously, because our permits are down. Um from last year. We were right at seven, a little over seventy nine thousand for the month of July, and this July we ended at fifty five. So. I mean, that's not, who's reading the specific dollar? Penny, no.
Glad you're. Can't look at it. Start your own.
Really, our biggest thing um that we've had recently is compliance issues, it's summer. Our phones ring in constantly with people. Concerned about other people at building permits, um. Our most recent one was, and this is turned over to the determining, the commissioners have been involved. There's been a special event that has been going, that was going on and now is slated again to go on August. I did serve a season of this order to that during that event. Um we did allow them to finish that particular event. Off, but they were. Um given notice that they could not continue with the event for that was slated in August. They'll have to push that back until they can go through the special event process. Or S U P, depending on how long they're going to be driving or having these events. Um. Said that again.
Is that a S U P or a S U P?
I think we're going to do it as special events.
Well, no, they didn't be as different. When we approved the last one.
It's not, it's not the one at all.
No.
I was not.
There's never been anything submitted.
What is, can you say what what did? And what do they mean?
They have advertised online that they're offering a. Training, if you will, on how to build a straw house. So out of straw bales, they're building, they have their lot, they're actually. When I um visited the property during the event, there was almost forty, at least forty, around forty people there. Uh for the event. They were camping on site. There was outdoor showers. Set out. But we did allow them to go ahead, it was two days left of the event by the time we were notified and I was able to get out there. We did let them continue with it with the promise that they wouldn't be going any further with their event in August. But. It is. Um we have sent it over to the.
Somebody advertised again. So this was happening, when did this last?
In July.
Okay, that was the first one.
It was a seven day event. Eleven hundred dollars a person.
Say I don't. I didn't hear anything.
It was, it was a seven day event and they were charging eleven hundred dollars a person, right around the over a thousand. So.
And they promised.
The one. It's online.
We don't know. What have you seen it on social media or newspapers?
Um it hasn't been, it's it's an online website. That they have, I don't know where they advertised. From what I understand, the majority of the people that attended were from out of state.
So they have at least got to have a special use for it. Or a special event on it. You know, to make sure that they've got. Sanitation. And and all of this, uh. And if they're going to do it more than once. They better be getting special use for it.
It's like, I'm trying to get off, so.
No, there's no one.
So. And I mean, you know.
What a part of the county.
Who's you?
Um Music Mountain?
What?
Music Mountain. Right? Pass out pass the air on airport roadway out pass it.
Said any of them or on the west side?
West side, no.
It's not. Do you know? Do you know where? Where the dump comes from, okay, so it's right up there by his place.
That's that's, it's long back there. Sports shelter. Oh yeah, there's go there, I have. There you are, but.
Let me tell you, that's a very long driveway, because they have it gated, I now have the coat, I walked all the way up that ramp. Had some good exercise. Some of our other issues to move on, um it's just a lot of people camping with no septic. A lot of people moving into the area, thinking they can live in their campers long term and not. They didn't think ahead enough to do the septic ahead before they start living on land. Um I do have one that I'm very concerned with about going out there. Due to feedback that I've been given, that I need to make sure I have the chef's. Office deputies with me. Um. Due to gang activity. Gang activity.
This is not some penny or inch also?
No. And I'm going to say words.
I'm supposed to say gang.
Gang.
Well, it's all. Okay, I I just looked at the um straw mail, it's it's called um strawmail dot com. Meet the host, let's go to the board. In July, they gathered to um. Seven day straw mail instruction workshop, July, which is twentieth. And a three day specialty plastic workshop. August sixteen to eighteen. So that's what they're advertising.
Well, they're built past those.
We are. There's I with summer, snow is melted, we have a lot of complaints about junk. It is lots, I mean, property value down. So, you know, I know we don't have a junk ordinance. But there are some places that. Are definitely bringing in their neighbor to property.
Well, why, why do we know that, why did we never get a job?
I'm going to ask you that.
No, I've said it, got shot down.
I mean, we have to be very particular on how we wrote it, because I don't know that I, and I know I don't have the time to.
It's been time for four.
Yep, it's through the trial.
It's been tried and it was written everything, it's all in your office and the public was, the public was. On a high shelf. It takes the. You know, a lot of our commissioners lived in this draw.
That's really about all I am.
So so. Last year, we talked about there was forty S T Rs that were leaving. They were legally operating. Out of those four. And we get going up, down, but.
It's going up, we fill up every year, we have one, again, one opening is up three. So the way that it's written, maybe we need to consider that. Cause at some point. We're going to have. If we keep. So basically, we we allow three and one in zone one, one in zone two. Three in zone three and three in zone four. This year we filled up except for we have one opening in zone three. Usually we don't even fill up in. Just because of where it's at, but.
I mean, zone, zone four is in one.
Zone four goes, it's, we have people lined up for next year. In zone four.
So those forty S T Rs are operating by that?
No, there's more than forty. Cause we add every year, we don't. And if.
What what can be done? Things? I'm looking at what Chris, because everyone here, well, yeah, I've been here, but it runs through the years, and that's really all. Well, there's, there's a distance.
We had.
We're at every.
We could. We couldn't.
Well, I heard they had a year, I thought, what I thought about, I think, forty, yes, we ordered the operating. Side of those cats.
I, I, I'll be honest with you, I can withstand all of that. I, once in a while, take a look at it, if I get a complaint, I address it. I have two complaints right now that I'm addressing, that people operating during the last years.
Well, we might have to find a good, who knocked down, as to who was, and if they actually join in there for a permit. Shoot them down, scare them, what I'm doing.
There is, and I can do that, and I send them a letter, I can go out and tag the buildings. Um, there is. An act that the governor signed. That states that the counties have regulation, they can regulate their S T Rs, and if they are not admitted. We should be able to go to the platform that they're advertising on, have them on those. I have tried. I've spent one whole day trying to get through to both the R V O and R B B's, I. If we can't, every time I thought I was gonna speak to somebody directly, I got hung up on, I tried really the online chat. And they're like, you gotta call, you gotta call, I mean, I even set and typed up the majority of the act to, you know, to get them to understand, it was signed by the governor of the state. You guys have to abide by this, and I'm not getting any support from either of them.
They don't wanna deal with.
Well, something that's gonna have to turn down state, you know. Cause it's not gonna have the small look out.
It's, I've tried, I can tell you, I don't have the manpower to, to. Please solve all.
Well, this is, we're lost areas now. More areas all the time, they're putting more clothes on S T Rs.
And we do have children, there, there's children that are in the. We've asked Chris. Upstairs and like. What is Chris, what's his title? Yeah, they give us a map, and I'm not sure if he can, um, how he's gonna be able to do it, but he's told us he's working on it. So that we can kind of pinpoint where the S T Rs are in each area. So you guys can visually look at that map and say, okay, we have a lot of red dots in this area, it worked over.
That'd be, could you get two different colors of the phone apps? And put all the licensed ones in one color contact, and then as you become aware of building, even if you don't have time to pursue it. Point the red now here. Or so they, then, you know, that we know, okay, this is a problem. But, but, you know, there's gotta be some. The, there's gotta be some consistency between saying that, that, you know, we didn't be catching, we're not gonna let it do that. Somebody, she's out of bounds, that's stop. So she was operating illegally. And we knew she was operating illegally, she's got all those things. Of all those other issues, and he'll be approving, we gotta stop doing that. Yeah, and she's, yeah, but then.
She's been, it's been over a year since we were there, since. It was addressed. Let's just say no.
She did, so.
I can't, I can't prove that, I was up there at one point in July of last year, and there were, it was getting shortened. I dropped the ball and didn't know it's not even, so I can't say. There was an issue. I, I just, it's too much trying to stay on topic. Be real honest with you. There's no doubt.
But, you'll do it after, you know, blast, I think, right? Right in the ball.
Plus, what's new to you?
He's got a very old man, he's a very careful. He's, he's got buses out there, and he's got a car up there, driven airplane, airplane. But he must.
Where is it?
On Bridge Inn, that rental.
So, how can I go to Bill Goodie and say, help me understand this? How can I go to him and say, you can't have an, these are these out here? When I can go down the road and somebody's got ten or twelve of them. I mean, I. Oh, I can show you some pictures, not out there, but in other areas.
But the one you're talking about, if it's at the airport.
It's outside there. But that's not in that, he, he, it jumps, so he's, he's under our jurisdiction out there.
You turn in the same way to go to his place as you do there, that is not.
Uh, it's, it's just. Cause the more, the more it gets out of hand, the more it gets out of hand.
And there, I'll send you a letter, but, you know, I have so many other.
Interesting, everything. And. He, we, somehow, maybe it's not helping you get a hand. Oh, that's, or somehow, so basically. It ju, it just keeps growing.
You almost needed a part-time. Show term, right?
There's more than lines, those lines, got lines up first, yeah. They're trying to start the time, sure, right, they do a lot of, obviously, just.
And people living with this, out of septic, and they're, I can go.
Still be friends to them.
Yeah, we have.
And that's because you don't want to, or?
Well, I don't know that I still have that in my budget, I have contract labor money in there and things. Not everything carried out.
Now, looks like we're, we've got. At least two special use permits next month.
I haven't seen.
They have not been turned in there.
One of them is only here.
Well, what, what, any of those are? What days are we?
I told him we would have had to have it like Monday, so.
So we're not in there as well.
Didn't like.
Well, wouldn't see it next month, it's not till.
It matters, so, Sep- September, so you know, it will be. It won't be until the ninth.
Right, so they need to get it in, though.
By, by the ninth, well, by the, actually, Thursday, the fifth. Yeah, I got to Thursday. We're working, it's working today, so. Thursday the ninth. I'm sorry. Right, no, Thursday's the eighth. So, so by this Thursday, yeah.
You want me to be having.
We might wanna give. Maybe, or like, just to see where.
You said one of them is Holy Mills? What happened to their own?
Was it, it is spirit, I mean. Uh, right, that's the question, I don't know, was the ground soul?
It was, uh, but it was good fun, they hadn't been operating in over twenty-three years.
It was, it was good fun.
That was done, that's where I can. Since we went and updated all of the S G Ps and P U Ds and everything, and it was already out of there.
Cause the last one I had, three, under that special use permit was Francis, and they've been going for.
So, uh, this is some.
We can't have one either.
They can't have one at half for breakfast, so they have septic every day.
Tomorrow's.
Here's what the commissioners, squeaky wheel gets and breaks. Kind of like a, sure, for a spring holler, you got brand new vehicle, and you should have their whole beer. You know, all that stuff, I, I stay all.
It took you. Hearing a crowd screaming, yeah.
And I, I was a squeaky wheel for a long time, and I'm very appreciative for them giving me what we need. We're sharing with the assessor's office, it's a Toyota four runner. It's a beautiful vehicle, you know. I can't thank them enough, I feel safe in that vehicle, I don't. That's what the bottom line.
I mean, it's just, it's just trouble again, when things are, these rules, regulations are the suggestions.
Well, I listened to the commissioner's meeting last week, or whenever it was. And there was a gentleman in public comment that went on about non-occupant issues. And the commissioner's coo-cooed it. And said that, um, he would need to. Contact the state and national, because we don't have a junk ordinance. And we don't have time to, you, you don't have time to barely do your job now. They actually said that in the meeting.
And that gentleman did come over, Kevin, I had been working on that situation, it was not. In my opinion, when I prioritize my, my compliance issues, it was not top of the list, I had, um. The, to me, the most important issue was the possibility of them doing a catch pond. I had Jerry Lighten good go out there, and he told me there was no concerns whatsoever. So we come up, fell to the ball. That was brought to the all three commissioners, um, the issues out there, and so you're right, the squeaky wheel gets greased, how are you saying that? So, that gentleman, Kevin did kind of, I guess, speak to him when, after the meeting, and. He came over and apologized, but it doesn't change the.
Well, that makes you feel a little bit depressed.
It doesn't, it doesn't change the fact that it was in a public meeting, it was a very.
That he was the wrong. And, and it was, it was, I had been there, I was always red in the face of.
And I've expressed my concerns. With Kevin. To Kevin about the fact that. If I'm not. Supported. By the commissioners, by all three commissioners, then my word means nothing, the letters I send out mean nothing. And I will bring it up in my monthly report on the fourth.
Yeah, that.
Another thing to consider is we spend a lot of money. When I escalate something and it goes to the attorney, it's not like it was before. Dan is a very good attorney, he's Johnny on the spot, taking care of things, he gives me good feedback, but it's costing. The number of issues that we have right now, I don't know if the county could afford to go after every single ish situation. So I have to keep that in mind as well, um.
President, we keep paying big bills, all of today's work.
I don't know.
On the goal there.
Compliance on.
No, he was.
Kind of managed. That's. I could.
Good, uh, okay.
Let's turn the beat.
Well, you, you don't have to throw over.
A lot of heart.
I'm gonna, where you're buried, I'm gonna, where you go, you don't know.